Okay, everyone, it is time to start the city council meeting for March 7th of 2022. We are really excited to have everybody here in the audience today. Brandon, I don't know if you can, but if you can scan the chambers, that would be wonderful to show everyone who's watching online or on television, all of the men and women in blue and their family members as we're going to recognize and honor them tonight. But first, we will start with a roll call and then an invocation by Luke Kennedy from the Vineyard Church.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Here.
Councilmember Reed, absent. Councilmember Schmisher.
Here.
Councilmember B. Smith, absent. Councilmember Stein.
Here.
Councilmember Tracy.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here. Let's all rise, please.
Jesus, thank you so much for our city. Thank you that you care about its health and its prosperity. We pray that you would continue bringing blessing for another 150 years. God, we thank you for its leaders, that you've placed them here in leadership. Would you give them wisdom tonight and this year as they serve the city? Would you protect them, Lord, from dishonor? And would you continue to show them honor through our city's citizens? Thank you for all the officers here and for their faithful service to our city. Would you continue to protect them and give them favor in each encounter they have? We honor them tonight, Lord. And I pray that you would turn their radar guns off when I drive by so they don't catch me speeding. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to turn the time over now to Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to ask those here with us and those with us on Zoom to join me in a moment of silence to remember those killed in Ukraine as a result of the Russian aggression that's going on over there. So if you would join me.
Thank you. Are there any citizens' requests to speak to city council on something that's not already on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to council member announcements. Councilmember Tracy.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Just want to alert council and the public in general that the monthly meeting of the Community Advisory Group for the Cotter Mill-Lincoln Park Superfund Site is next Tuesday. As usual, the meeting is available on Zoom. It's all virtual still. It started two years ago being online because of the pandemic. Still is online. You can contact me if you would like that Zoom link, or you can find it through the State Department of Public Health and Environment. We're usually also on Facebook Live, but this month because of some technical problems at the state, that won't happen this month, but usually we are. So that's Tuesday, 6:00 PM. Let me know if you'd like to know the link for that meeting. We have, I'll just say real briefly, one of the agenda items will be discussion of the comments that the State Department of Public Health and Environment and the Federal Environmental Protection Agency recently submitted back to the site owner, Colorado Legacy Land. So there'll be some discussion on the draft R.I., which is Remedial Investigation Report. So there will be discussion on that. Thanks.
Thank you, Member Councilmember Tracy. I'd also like to take a moment to thank our Parks Department and our Canyon City staff, including Cindy and Ryan, for all of their help this weekend as we celebrated some of our 150th activities. Friday night, we had our Canyon proud, kind of a pep rally and art display. We served over 200 people there and had a lot of our high school students there, which was a lot of fun and a lot of vibrancy and a really good vibe. And the next day, we had quite a crew to come do some cleanup around Canyon City for our Canyon cleanup. And that was also really exciting and fun to see some big dumpsters filled with trash from downtown and skyline and all over Canyon City. So many thanks to all of those that made that possible. Ryan, I also wanted to mention to you and to those who'll be attending the UTV meeting, and so for police chief, it goes to you as well, that I attended the mayor's roundtable this last week, and we had mayors from West Cliff and Silver Cliff, Florence, Rockville, Coal Creek. They all have an ordinance that allows UTVs on their roads, but every single one of them, and they were pretty emphatic about it, had an individual sticker for their city to qualify that UTV to drive on their roads. And so I just want to let you know, as you have that discussion, that it might be prudent to be consistent with the other cities and their regulations that they have. And I asked if they've had any problems or issues or complaints from their ordinances or the, and they've had none. And mostly it's probably because none of the UTVs can go on county highways or roads. And so they're really actually limited in how far they can go and what they can do. Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to remind everybody, we do have a general government meeting this Wednesday, March 9th, at 5:00 PM here in these chambers. We're going to be having a presentation from the Chamber of Commerce, and in addition, there'll be a discussion about chronic nuisances.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick. Any other announcements from city council? All right, well, now I'd like to invite our police chief, John Schick, to come address the city council. We have some recognitions and proclamations to do, to honor and give public awareness to some of the incredible work that our police department has done in saving lives and protecting Canyon City.
Madam Mayor, members of council, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Hoffman, thank you for having us. Always nice to come before council, and I really appreciate your willingness to receive us and recognize the officers for their efforts in the community. Tonight, we're going to be recognizing multiple officers across different units within the department, and we also have a individual, one of our professional staff, to recognize for her years of service. We're going to start with a chief's commendation tonight. The chief's commendation is to be awarded to employees for outstanding acts or achievements, which brings credit to the department and which involves performance above and beyond that required by the employee's basic assignment. I would like to start by calling up Officer Brian Nellinger and Officer Morgan Rockmore. I'm sorry, Cassie Rockmore. I was looking at Rock, Morgan. Just stand right up there in front of council. There you go. Right there. The combined efforts of Cassie and Brian are representative of our city mantra in terms of service excellence. The significance of their individual and collective achievements toward our community safety in these events cannot be overstated. On February 7th, 2022, Officer Nellinger took a case in regards to a possible impending school shooting. Officer Nellinger conducted an initial investigation, was able to secure an arrest warrant for the suspect. In the early hours, the next morning, the suspect was taken into custody on Officer Nellinger's warrant. And later that day, Officer Nellinger coordinated with the Investigations Division and completed an extensive follow-up on the case to include a search warrant for a residence and then the associated threat matrices that we require before we execute search warrants and operational plans. Officer Nellinger then spearheaded the briefing and led the team into the successful completion of the search warrant. Officer Nellinger conducted a follow-up, marandizing the interview and interviewing the suspect, and completed a second search warrant for a separate address where he again completed a number of threat matrices and operational plans. Officer Nellinger coordinated a response to the address and successfully executed the search warrant, strengthening his case. This was an excellent learning opportunity for Officer Nellinger. These were, these were, these were case events that are certainly above and beyond what his normal job requirements ask of him day in and day out. Officer Nellinger should be commended for his dedication and relentless follow-up on this case to ensure the safety of our community. Attached to the same event, operating separately, Officer Rockmore, due to the nature of these threats, you might understand that as this call came in, we coordinated closely with the schools, and we were planning for the next day to make sure that our schools were safe. This was going to require an enormous public safety footprint. We were going to have to have officers at every school. The schools would have to go into a secured status, and it was a huge undertaking. Our officers stepped up across the board. We had additional officers that went out the night of this reported incident to try and locate the suspect who was actively evading our capture. Officer Rockmore took it upon herself to try and establish, locate a number and establish communications with the individual, which she did. She tried in great lengths to convince the individual to come in and speak with the PD, and of course, he would not come in. She then recognized that she had an opportunity to try and identify the cell service provider and then the internet service provider to locate, to triangulate the location where this individual was communicating from. She was able to do that, able to identify a location, and we were later, in that same shift, she was able to lead our personnel to the door of this individual and take him into custody without incident. Those efforts were exactly, well, I should say, Officer Rockmore's actions gave the schools and the community a sense of relief. And as I talked about before, her actions directly spared the PD and the school from taking extra security measures the following day, once we were able to have him in custody. With that, I would like to present both Officer Brian Nellinger and Officer Cassie Rockmore with the chief's commendation.
The main feature right here. Yeah.
Uh, sure. Not really about me. Now, the next group that we're going to recognize, I would like to have K-9 officers Owen B. and Phillips come up front, Detective Smelser, Gary, and Belding, and Sergeant Now, some of these, this is a combined citation, and again, going back to the threat of the school shooting, I think it's significant to recognize the teamwork that existed across units within the PD. Brian Nellinger certainly took the lead on this event, and again, as we stated earlier, his actions were above and beyond what is required in his normal assignment. But he certainly could not have done that alone because of that. Sergeant Leonard and his group and the K-9 officers were instrumental in helping accomplish the two separate searches, putting together the threat matrices, going through the operational planning that has to occur before we go out and execute search warrants, arrest warrants, those types of things. So I want to recognize the collective good that occurred here. K-9 officers Owen B. and Phillips, Detective Smelser, Gary, Belding, and Sergeant Leonard all assisted Officer Nellinger in his quest to solve his case. Sergeant Leonard was quoted as saying, "I'm not only appreciative, but impressed with the willingness of the K-9s and detectives to not only assist patrol with their cases, but how they stepped up to mentor the patrol officers who come in and requested assistance." This case is just one example of the guidance these guys provide regularly. The entire Investigations Unit, along with the K-9 Unit, provided all the necessary support to bring about a successful conclusion to this case, and I feel like they should all be recognized in that capacity. Combined, I would also like to take a moment while they are up here to talk about the significance of their actions related to the December case involving the Riverwalk incident. On December 11th, 2021, Detective Sergeant Leonard, Detective Smelser, and Detective Belding assisted patrol with a call where a female jogger was attacked on the Riverwalk. They did an excellent job of investigating this case from working as a team, not only within their own unit, but coordinating with patrol to accomplish various tasks. On December 12th, they were able to identify the suspect via video surveillance. Officer, come on up, Jordan. Officer St. Louis, on December 12th, was able to identify while conducting surveillance on the suspect residence, was able to identify this individual as they were leaving, and then he was able to stop the suspect and take the suspect into custody. Officer St. Louis assisted Detective Belding on executing search warrants, and the suspect was taken into custody. All the officers and detectives in this case certainly are deserving of a unit citation having resolved such a significant case within our community and again, contributing to our overall feeling of safety and security.
Thank you. shining in your eyes. Do you want to come in? Look through the side thing. Maybe these spaces this way, starting from here. You guys can come out, you guys can come out. Perfect. What a huge relief for our community to know that our CCPD is so proactive and gets such quick results. Most people didn't know about the shooting and that time factor that needed to be taken care of, or the potential shooting because of the threats that were made, and it was within close proximity to one of our schools. But as a city council, we were kept up to date, and we were on edge, and the huge sigh of relief when that arrest was made, it was really significant.
I could not agree more, Madam Mayor.
And on the other side, with the jogger on the Riverwalk that was attacked, everybody in the community knew about it immediately. And to have such a quick arrest within, what, 24 hours? That was huge confidence builder for us to know that you are taking really good care of us and to also know that one of our favorite places to spend time is on the Riverwalk, that it was going to be safe again, and that we are still patrolling it to this day as much as we can. So thank you for that comfort for our public safety.
Well, we appreciate that.
Absolutely, to every single one of you and to your family members that give you the love and the support that you need at home. It's, it takes everybody, and I know that it's tough on the families as well, so thank all of you.
Now, last but not least, Ms. Kim, you want to come on up?
So let's not have Kim stand in front of the projector because that just does not look comfortable.
Why don't you just go stand right up in front of council? Because I know how you like to be on center stage.
Come on up. You're a superstar tonight, Kim.
Ms. Wilson, Kim, more affectionately referred to around the office, is being recognized tonight for 25 years of service to Canyon City and its community. Her, as of February 19th, 2022, Kim received or reached her 25-year anniversary with the City of Canyon City Police Department. Ms. Wilson began her career with the department as a dispatcher, then managed physical evidence, and moved on to handling the department's digital evidence. She is certainly a subject matter expert in all of those arenas, and the undertaking that has become digital evidence has probably exceeded all of our expectations in terms of what she does for us. It's a pretty significant footprint. She is by far the longest-serving member of the department, excluding Ken Sabruski, who was a retired sergeant and came back to us from, in the Parks Department. She has served through numerous chiefs, city council administrations, and innumerable officers and her other peer employees, but she is certainly admired throughout the agency. She is always willing to step up and do more than her fair share or carry her fair share of water, as I like to say, and she is always available to us in a variety of capacities, whether it is putting on a luncheon for the PD or serving as the digital photographer for Shop With A Cop, or redecorating the office in terms of putting her creativity, her creative side together and helping us to reimage ourselves. So I thought it would be appropriate tonight to bring her before council and recognize 25 years of dedicated, hard work by Mrs. Wilson for the City of Canyon City.
All right, well, I believe it is time now to go to our regular business, the meet that we need to take care of, and that's our consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Item 8A is to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting on February 21st, the special city council meeting, which was the retreat on February 15th, and the Vision Committee meeting on February 23rd. 8B, awards bid 2222 fertilizer to Jordan of Morel, Nebraska, and an amount not to exceed $14,220. 8C, awards bid 2822 virtual machine infrastructure licensing to Insight Public Sector, and an amount not to exceed $2,718.88. 8D, awards bid 3222 for traffic paint. 8E, authorizes the city administrator to sign an intergovernmental agreement between the city and Fremont Sanitation District for the Rhodes Avenue Project. And 8F is cash dispersments.
Any questions for Ryan or questions pertaining to the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda and the consent agenda.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember Stein?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
All right, that has passed. Thank you, Council. Ryan, would you like to give us an administrator's report?
Madam Mayor and Members of Council, you have the written administrator's report in front of you. One thing that's not on the report that is related to the 150th anniversary is, one of the activities that we're looking at is purchasing silver coins as a commemorative piece to remember the 150th by, and that goes slightly above my spending authority of $6,500. I believe it's $6,800 and change to order 200 silver coins. These coins would be, there'd be a couple that are held back for the museum, but the rest of them would be sold to those who are interested in remembering the 150th, and I just want to give a thumbs up to move forward with that, and then this would be approved through a list of bills at a future date.
And I would, Mr. Administrator, I'd just like to point out that the silver price was as per last week. Things may have changed, so it probably needs to, we probably need to bump that estimate up a little bit.
Thank you, Madam, Mayor Pro Tim.
And then with the sales, will that basically recover the purchase price?
Yeah, so we'll go back to the 150th budget.
Absolutely. Yep, thumbs up.
Thumbs up. And I'm happy to take any questions regarding the administrator's report.
How are things going at the Rhodes Project?
Rhodes Project, things are moving along. You're going to see some changes to the landscape over there with some of the trees that are in the ditch channel, unfortunately, having to come down, but there's always the potential for planting more trees in the future. So with the passing of the IGA today, the work with Sanitation District can begin, and they are anxiously awaiting that proceed letter.
Madam Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'd note that there was actually a major leak at the water plant, if I understand correctly, that wasn't covered in the report, but...
Yeah, that happened after the report was written. We did have a pipe burst up at the plant, and our water treatment crew jumped right into it, got it repaired, and we were down less than 24 hours.
But the, there's always in a case like that, there's a potential for major disruptions to the system because of possible contaminants that might enter the system. I was with an individual from another city, and there, the city of Rawlins, up in Wyoming, had some pipe leaks where it was possible that, you know, some contaminants were sucked back into their system through these leaks. They had a boil order in place and a shutdown of their system for, that lasted a couple of days, and, but we avoided all that with the actions of our crews.
Absolutely. Our crew jumped on that right away. They were in touch with the state throughout the entire events, and all levels came back within safe ranges, and no boil order or anything like that.
No potential health impacts from this.
That's correct.
Thank you. Please pass along our appreciation to our staff that were involved in that. They certainly deserve recognition as well, as also some basic necessities of life is our clean water, so we would appreciate that. I do need to take a moment, I'm sorry, Council, but we have a Canyon City High School student who's doing their capstone project, and they would like to address city council, so I'd like to invite you to come to the microphone. We also need you to state your name and kind of what you're up to and what you'd like to talk to us about.
My name is Carson Kendrick. I am a junior at the Canyon City High School. I would like to thank all of you for your time to listen to me. For my capstone is how to make Canyon City a safer place for bicyclists all throughout town.
I'm Ben Brunson. I'm just a teacher, mentor, helping him out, moral support. I'm a little more nervous than he is, so.
Can you tell us a little bit more about what you're working on for making bicycle lanes in Canyon City?
Bicycle lanes, mostly like the wider streets of Ninth Street and 15th Street, where the streets are a bit wider than others, specifically where CES schools are. I, there is a sidewalk, but that's not really big enough for both bicyclists and walkers. I was thinking maybe just a little lane with a normal bike lane up and down Ninth Street, and installations of them throughout town that began, like down Main Street, too.
Yeah, that's an important one. Ryan, we have ideas for future conversations on the mobility through Canyon City, is that right?
We do. The comprehensive plan that was completed last year actually talked about doing a study on mobility, so, you know, complete streets, which includes bike lanes, and, you know, how to connect those, and I'd be very happy to connect you with Kim Swearingen, our Public Works Director, to talk more about your ideas and see how we can help facilitate your project.
Thank you, sir. And again, thank you, Council, for taking your time to listen to me.
Yeah, you have some council members that I'd like to talk to, if that's okay.
That's fine.
We'll start with Councilmember Tracy.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I think this is great. I just, I hope that as part of your project, you're looking at what some other communities have done. I assume you are. One thing that occurs to me that I've seen in some communities where even if a street doesn't have room for just a dedicated bike lane, there can be specific markings in the roadway that remind drivers that bikes can use that lane, too. So look, take a look at all of that, because it's not only, you know, to comply with state law, so to speak, but it's also to enhance the safety of bike riders and keep drivers aware that bike riders have a right on the road, so good luck to you in your work.
Thank you. In fact, one of the models we were looking at, for examples, especially in Berlin, they have very good examples of streets that allow bike mobility, as you guys say, mobility throughout the streets. Their streets aren't exactly wide enough for both cars sometimes, but they do have markings saying that bikers can use that part of the lane.
Yep, yep. They have those in the town of Breckenridge, and I'm sure many other places, too, so that would be good.
All right, Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
So yes, thank you for doing this. You know, as city council members, we're not only deal with sometimes more theoretical, you know, aspects of city regulation, but we also have to sometimes get down into the specific details of, you know, measurements and distances, and so if you have a capstone report that deals with some of those issues, or even whether it's theoretical or the practical implementation or something like that, make sure that both our city administrator, Ryan Stevens, and our Public Works Director, Kim Swearingen, get a copy of that so that we can use that as input. And also, I'd like to invite you that if we have upcoming meetings where we're going to be discussing these things, and you'd like to participate, we'd sure like to see you there.
Of course, thank you.
Yes, make sure that, do we have his contact information? So we'll have you fill out a little form and include your email address on there, too.
All right.
But we do have Councilmember Dennehy that would like to talk to you as well.
And I just want to say thank you as well. I think some of it's been covered, but I just want to say thank you, because, one, I think it's great that you're doing this, but you're thinking of our community as well, which I think, as you can see, it doesn't matter what age, you know, if we all get involved in our community, we're all going to make it better, and I'd like to thank you as, you know, it just shows what our schools are offering, and seeing that the staff is behind them, I'm so excited as my kid gets a little older, and I just want to say thank you, and I really, congratulations on this, and I'm excited to see, you know, when you get it done. I'm excited to read it, and look what you got, so nice job. Thank you.
Yeah, and ultimately, one day, there will be some bike lanes designated on our streets, and you'll be able to really give yourself a pat on the back for being a part of that solution-based thinking. So congratulations and good luck, and thanks for being such a great mentor as well.
Thank you so much.
Awesome. Well, this is crazy. I think in the first time ever, in my experience, we have nothing else on the agenda except for an executive session. This is really weird, but also really exciting. So turn the time over to Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick to call us into this executive session.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I move that the city council enter into executive sessions for the following purposes. An executive session to consider personnel matters regarding the city administrator's evaluation process pursuant to CRS 24-6-4024-F.
I second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember Stein?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, will there be another Zoom address for Councilmember Schmisher? And she has that?
There is. Yes, she does.
Okay, excellent.
We're going to the council rooms.
Okay. Excellent. Okay, then we are going to be moving into the council rooms now for our executive session.